Can we get, can we get started, Brian? I mean.
Yeah. All right, the time is now 6:31. It is public comment time from, from now until seven o'clock. Those that are here in the chambers have an opportunity to speak on an item that is not on the agenda. Please state your name and address for the record. Those that are here that don't want to speak, there's a sign in sheet in the back. And you can comment on those if you'd prefer. If you're on Zoom, you should be able to raise your hand and I should be able to see you. So at this time, again, you'll have max of five minutes. Open it up to the floor for public comment.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
No, just a minute. Jamie, we'll go, you want to go turn that speaker on over there too? Is that mic on there? Make sure it's down.
Okay. Brian, are we good to proceed? My name is Jamie Parsons and I live at 1260 Woodlong Drive here in Fremont. For those of you who do not know me, I am the board president of the Dodge County Humane Society. I just wanted to get up here tonight and finally have an opportunity to perhaps speak a little bit of our side of what's been going on. For those of you who are currently on the council and those of you who are new, you know that 2020 has been a challenging year for the Humane Society. Just a real quick background of how I started, how I got on the board. The company that I worked for here in Fremont, I was approached by the owner of my company and he said to me one day, "Yeah, here at Dodge County Humane Society is looking for a new president. You love animals, you care about animals, this is a great opportunity for you to serve in the community, get your name out there and do good for the animals." So I said, "Sure, sign me up." So when I first joined the board, it was a very easy, easy role. You know, we met once upon, of course, we're an active board. We fully support the board, we do meet, we go over minutes. All the things that a regular board is supposed to do. So back to 2020. We had an incident back in April, March, April, that led to an absolute nightmare for our Dodge County Humane Society and our executive director, Tamar Reed, as well as all of the board members who were on at the time. We had some protests that happened here locally. I do want to point out that a certain city council member did, was a leader. Well, a couple of the city council members were great leaders in these protests and come to find out that they even provided food and water for the protesters here in town. The advisory board that was committed, that was formed. Big sigh. I feel personally that there were multiple conflicts of interest on the members of the community or people that were chosen to serve on that board. We have never fully gotten a chance to sit up here and speak our side of the story. Our attorneys have advised us against it for obvious reasons. I finally did have a chance to Joey Spellerberg, Brian Newton, and the city, the chief of police came down and we met with him or some of the staff members a week ago, just to kind of do a meet and greet and have an opportunity to look at what goes on inside of the shelter. You know, during the back of the protests and over this past year, our staff members have been absolutely petrified to go to and from work. We've had incidences where staff member, excuse me, staff members, yes, were approached by city council members and felt that they were very unsafe in their own surrounding. Our current, our current staff, a lot of them are young, they are very loyal to Tamar and the Humane Society. I will tell you that Tamar has, that Humane Society, the best ran than it ever has. Contrary to belief, she has multiple policies and procedures that were in place or that were not in place prior to her joining in 2017. There's, there's a schedule that was never scheduled before, written charts all over to make sure that there's a check down system that happens every day. As far as the contract is concerned, we have replied to the city attorney. We went, our board members, we spent hours and hours going through each line item of that contract. And, you know, there's a lot of things that we haven't been giving to you, but at the same time, really, what are they? Because a lot of the things that are supposed to be prescribed by the city have never been prescribed. There's never been a sit down conversation, a memorandum of understanding or anything of that nature so that we can all be on the same page and collectively work together. One last thing here, a couple of things, I just want to mention that, you know, not certain which way all of you are leaning towards. We do have 50 plus animals currently that we are sheltering. If the contract is actually compromised, you know, I, I fear for the animals and where we're going to go. We simply cannot continue to care for these animals if we don't have the funding for them. You know, we might all, not all get along at some point in time, but with more effective communication, I think that these relationships can actually be, maybe not rectified, but started. There's never been an opportunity for us to all collectively get together, sit down together and, and see, see how we can work out things that maybe here and there haven't been able to be talked over. I guess I just, I'll finish here with, for those of you who already had your mind made up, I would just kindly ask that you approach this situation or your decision with an open mind and realize that not all sides of the story have been on the table. I appreciate your time and if you ever have any questions or wish to reach out to me personally, Brian Newton has my phone number or we could always schedule a meet and greet for you to come down to the shelter. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Again, this is public comment. We have up to five minutes to speak on an item, not on the agenda, enough, the floor is open.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm Susan Jacobus. I live at 1805, excuse me, North D Street. And what I come here to say is just to ask you to please follow through with what you started. In the past four years, we've had a lot of controversy. Several of you still seated and all of you newly seated are aware there's been ongoing battles between DCHS and the general citizens. There's been many issues of concern, some that have been recent that have not been fully addressed by our police force yet. They've had the opportunity to do so and will hopefully address that soon. One of the concerns, we have an RFP on the table. It hasn't been brought back to you yet for consideration. We both know that the recent numbers that you have gotten on animal control are not what they had been for the three years prior. Right or wrong, whether they were done correctly or not, it's not the issue of concern is that some of those numbers don't match. The animals that they have on intake didn't agree with documentation, et cetera. And those are all issues of concern that most of you have heard, whether you were seated at the time or not. I would ask that you take serious consideration to move forward with the RFP and take a good look at it. And what is best interest for our citizens. Right now, it is transpired in the past three years of late, has not been commented to the city of Fremont. We didn't need the black eye, don't need to continue as a hat, and we need to do better for the citizens. And I'm one of those citizens that has found that both HNR and other rescues. And we take in animals and bring them to the local rescues as well. And I'm also a volunteer for taxi services for different shelters and different rescues outside of the city of Fremont. And I don't do it for any monetary gain, I do it because it's the right thing to do because people are fearful to bring their animals to DCHS. And they don't want to speak up and step forward because they are fearful that their animals will be taken out of their yards. You have all sat here and listened to complaints, some of you are tired of listening to those complaints, I can appreciate that because those meetings went on a great length. But this is now falling to you. We, myself included, as former season council member, kicked that can down the road long enough. This is something all of you have to take grips with and, and deal with. And please open your minds and do what's right by the citizens and for the animals themselves. Most of you do not trust in your household. Not aware that, all of you will interfere that if you open up the door and your animal gets out, that you won't see anything. That happened to me and I still live with that fear. And we still cannot let our animals out into the yard, our three dogs, which we have a quarter acre of instance. Without concern that somehow they will disappear. We lock our cage, their paddock, we shouldn't have to do that. We don't do that because the neighborhood kids are going to open it up. We do do it because we're fearful, because I have been vocal, both in the paper and on the TV station and here at the council level. And spoke out against some of the issues of concern with DCHS. That's ongoing. And it is still happening now with many of our citizens. And it would behoove you to no longer allow to kick a can down the road and consider what's best for this taxpayer and citizens. This is the Fremont and our animals. Thank you.
Thank you. Jean on Zoom, the floor is yours. You might need to unmute.
Okay, is that unmuted? I unmuted it. Could you hear me?
Hi Jean, I'm sorry, we're having some technical difficulties. Just, just hang on, we'll hopefully get you here at the end of the period. My apologies, we're trying to fix Zoom right now.
I want to tell you, we're having technical difficulties.
Anybody else in the chambers?
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me this time to speak. My name is Tamar Reed. I'm the current executive director of the DCHS. And for the last nine months, I have sat back quietly and listened to being called every name in the book by past employees, individuals who don't even live in Fremont, and by certain, certain city council members. Never once have I ever stooped to the level that some of these individuals have. COVID-19 has made this world a scary place and it has allowed people in the world to be bullied and harassed and by individuals through social media. And those individuals usually suffer no consequences. I do not partake in social media and I find very sad that some individuals post so many false statements. The Fremont Tribune has printed five stories about DCHS and how that we have violated the contract on numerous occasions. Yet, that has never been proven, never been discussed, never been brought forth to our attention or anything. Never once has the Fremont Tribune contacted us to ask for our side of the story or even just a little bit of input from us. One time, the reporter did call our office after 2:00 PM and asked for a quote in order to counsel analysis of false claims by his 5:00 PM deadline. Other than that, they have never reached out to us for anything. Another, other than that, until Mayor Spellerberg and Ryan Newton and Chief Elliott came and spoke with us last week. Number one, some city council members come to us. We have never closed our doors, we have never banned anyone from our doors, we've never allowed anyone to come in and see what we're doing. Instead of falsely being accused of doing everything. An advisory committee was formed on, and on May 7th. Previous council person Jacobus quoted as saying those individuals that are asked to serve on the board need to remain objective and to stay on task. And that task is whether DCHS is in compliance. Okay? One person selected was an attorney who argued a case against DCHS. Two members were the creators and the people selling the get rid of tomorrow signs. And one person on that committee refused to work with the rest of the committee. Please explain to me, how is this a fairly formed group? This is the group that you formed. On September 18th, Councilman Ellis complained that the committee was taking too long and the committee itself voted to disband. One of the group members then decided to turn in her own multiple page report and investigation. And then she went to the newspaper where lie after lie was told and printed about us. On October 2nd, it was reported that the divide among the city council was the fault of DCHS. In that same article, Councilman Jensen stated that the advisory board was, never had the authority to compel testimony or to receive documents, yet somehow multiple reports ended up in their hands. He also reported that there are people in the council who have their own agenda. In that same article, Councilman Ellis adamantly claims that there are numerous violations by DCHS and that we have broken the law. If we want to talk about the laws being broken, let's discuss when two city council members trapped one of our young female employees between themselves and two parked vehicles. And the police had to be called three times before they responded to that incident. The female employee felt very harassed and very frightened in her own place of employment. And the city council members felt that it was in their right to do that as city councilmen, members. Thank goodness that she wasn't attacked or assaulted in any way. On another occasion, the police were called to respond to two strangers outside of our building on a Sunday evening, late at night, because there was individuals out knocking on the windows and yelling through the doorways. When the female employee inside called for the police to come and help her, they refused to respond. She was inside merely waiting for a second employee to come and to assist her with the animal that we had just picked up. What is it going to take to make the city and the police, make DCHS a priority? And to protect our staff as well as all the other community members in Fremont? We are here to assist the police in animal control and to uphold the city ordinances for you, the city council.
Going to have to ask you to wrap it up.
Okay, but we are not here to be bullied or attacked every time that we have to respond to a call. We currently hold the contract and we're here to perform animal control. However, that's not possible when other rescues or other individuals just continue to harass us and bully us as they do. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are we good on Zoom? Jean, if you're there, go ahead, make sure you're unmuted.
I am here, I am here, am I muted? Am I here? It doesn't say it's muted. Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Hey Jean, I'm sorry, we're still having technical difficulties. I don't want you to keep going on if you're talking and we're not hearing you. And we'll, we'll work this out.
Please do because it's urgent.
Anybody else in the council chambers?
Can you hear it?
Yes.
I can hear her on Zoom.
You can hear her on Zoom?
It's urgent. It's urgent. It is urgent. Can you hear me?
Anybody in the chambers as we're working through this still? Please sign in.
Hello, go ahead. My name is Will Furness. I live at 1750 Gate Avenue. And I would just like to say that I am a current employee of DCHS and that we do our job and we do it well. No other place in the town of Fremont has the facility or the staffing that we do to do the job of animal control. If you vote against keeping the contract with us, it will just be doing injustice to the citizens of Fremont and just be relying on your own personal prejudices instead of actually helping the city. Instead of continuing to kick a worthless can down the road, pick up the can and move on because we have done a great job.
Thank you. Are we good now? Okay, let's try this again, Jean, go ahead, this should work this time.
Okay, I hope so. Because when the first JB Parsons, when they wear their mask, you can hear nothing and everything is reverberating. So it's really been hard to hear, but I do want to say that I have heard so many lies in the last, however many minutes it's been.
Did I have you state your name and address, please?
I did earlier, Gloria Jean Yurger, 2318 East Fifth Street.
Thank you.
And I want to tell you, I have heard so many lies since between JB Parsons and Tamar. I would like a face to face meeting with them, with Joey Spellerberg and I have an attorney who has plenty of data and the things they're saying are absolutely, the first thing is, the first time I met Jamie Parsons, Tamar had, had adopted out a dog three times and against the rules, it had never been spayed. And when it started having trouble, she told him to take it to Arlington and she met them there and confiscated that dog. And that's why we were all down there because she wouldn't return it. Because obviously it was proof that she had not followed the laws of the state. That's number one. But on and on, the, she won't let anybody in there when she says we have to, you have to meet them out in the parking lot. So she says people had to be at the parking lot, she demanded it, she lets nobody in there. I can't even begin to tell you the lies that I've heard. And JB Parsons, I know a person on that committee I spoke with, she resigned because she tried to bring up issues to the committee and Tamar told her to be quiet and they quit inviting her and she finally resigned when everything was happening because so many issues had been brought up of ill treatment of the animals. And if anybody on the committee brought it up, they weren't allowed to speak about it and I can get that person to speak to you. And also, nobody ever gets to go to attend the meetings, to hear any of the minutes of the meetings. Hardly even get to know who's on those meetings. We have tried everything to make contact with Tamar, with the Humane Society and, and at no avail. And so we had to start going to the city council. It's been over, it's been a year and we have no feedback from the city council.
Thank you.
And the things that were said to me with those people, with you Joey Spellerberg in person. Because what they said are absolute lies and I have a whole list of them. Is my time, is my time up?
There's a couple more minutes.
Okay, because I can't, I am so frustrated to hear some of the things they said. And they, they don't allow anybody in there. And I would like to schedule a meeting because I have plenty of people that will come and give testimony of how they've been treated by the Dodge County. Wanted, right. What, after she's 10 years old, they only let her go back to the people that had her if she would have be spayed. And so they had to do that and pay for it themselves when it had already been paid earlier. And, you know, they had to put her down because she was so old. So Bessie is dead. I'm so furious about it. And when Tamar says, "Oh, reason we had to go protest because nobody could talk with her." I guess I can, I have so many things, I would like to meet with you Joey Spellerberg and with Tamar and with what's her name, Parsons and my attorney. Because they are lying. They've been lying, everything they said tonight was a lie. I've done.
Thank you. We got three more minutes here. I have a Ray on Zoom, go ahead. It looks like you're muted, oh, there you go.
Hi, Ray Tough at 1825 North King, Fremont, Nebraska. First of all, I would just like to say that there's many of you guys that are newly seated on this board, but all of you guys know exactly what has been going on. We've all filled you in on everything as far as DCHS. And we're hoping and praying that Joey does not continue to carry on this, this route that Brian Newton and previous mayor Getchman has.
I think we lost you. You want to try to log in again? All right, again, that was a public comment from six thirty to seven. The time is now seven o'clock. We will call the, oh, first, let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now we'll officially open the Board of Equalization meeting of December twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty. Time is now seven PM. The Opens Meeting Act is posted on the rear wall next to the agendas. At this time, we'll do roll call. Please vote for roll call. Councilmembers Ellis and Gibson, it did not record your votes. Councilmember Gibson, you just want to hit yes for present? Thank you. Eight councilmembers are present. Mayor? Thank you. Item one, Resolution twenty twenty-two five seven, levying a special tax and assessment in the amount of six hundred and fifty-eight dollars and twenty-six cents against North Side Lots One, Two, and Three, Block Two, Twenty-Second and Irving, to pay the cost of weed and debris removal and assessment. At this time, we'll have staff report.
Mayor and council, these three items on the Board of Equalization meeting for tonight, they are for unpaid cleaning bills for cleaning up properties. In addition to the charge for that, there's a charge for filing and releasing the lien. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for staff? Any comments from the public? Any comments from council? I would take a motion in regards to this item. Councilman Yurger.
Make a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-two fifty-seven.
Councilman Leggman.
I will second that.
Cast your votes.
Motion carries eight zero, Mayor.
Item two, Resolution twenty twenty-two five eight, levying a special tax and assessment in the amount of one thousand five hundred and sixty-four dollars and fifty-three cents against Morrell's West One Half Lot Seven and Eight, Block Thirty-three, tenth thirty-five West Ten Street, to pay the costs of weed and debris removal and assessment. This time we'll have staff report.
Mayor and council, again, this is a, an assessment for a property that was cleaned up. We're looking to recover the expenses in addition to that twenty dollars. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from, for staff. Councilman Yurger.
I'm just curious if staff has any information as to the significance of this charge. That's considerably higher than a lot of the others. I'm wondering if it's just the nature of the debris that had to be cleaned up or if this is multiple offense or...
I don't have the specifics on this property, but I'd imagine the size of the lot in addition to the materials. The, the, the street department charges based upon the man-hours and the equipment used to clean up the property. So it's either the size or the amount on, on the property.
Councilman Coons.
Yeah, I was just going to mention that if you get on Google Earth, it'll show the property and it looks like a salvage yard. I think it was pretty critical.
Any other questions for staff? Any comments from the public? Any comments from council? I would take a motion in regards to this item. Councilman Jensen.
I'll just make the motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-two five eight.
Councilwoman Ganem.
Second that motion.
Please cast your votes.
The motion carries eight zero, Mayor.
Item three, Resolution twenty twenty-two five nine, levying a special tax and assessment in the amount of three hundred and seventy-nine dollars and sixteen cents against R. Kittles, West Fifty-three North Ninety, Lots One and Two, Block Twenty-three, Nine O Five, East Military Avenue, to pay the costs of weed and debris removal and assessment. At this time, we'll have staff report.
My report is the same as the last two. This is simply an item for cleanup on a property and the additional twenty-dollar charge for filing and releasing the lien.
Any questions for staff? Any comments from the public? Any comments from council? Councilman Yurger.
Make a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-five nine.
Councilman Leggman.
And I will second that.
Please cast your votes.
The motion carries eight zero, Mayor.
I would now take a motion to adjourn the Board of Equalization meeting of December twenty-ninth. Councilman Leggman.
Make a motion to adjourn the Board of Equalization.
Councilwoman Ganem.
Second that motion.
Please cast your votes for adjournment.
Motion carries eight zero, Mayor.
Board of Equalization meeting is adjourned. We will now, I will now open up the city council meeting of December twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty. Time is now seven oh six PM. The Opens Meeting Act is posted on the rear wall next to the agendas. This time we'll have roll call.
Please vote for roll call. Eight councilmembers are present. Mayor?
Thank you. Next item is mayor's comments. I do have a few things tonight I'd like to, to bring forward. First of all, I hope everyone got dug out today. We had quite a snowstorm come through. No, I saw maybe seven to eight inches or more. So I hope everybody's staying safe on the roads. And again, please, yeah, please be safe while you're, while you're driving right now. Thanks to our street department who's doing a good, great job clearing the roads and doing what they can to move as quickly as possible. So thanks, everyone, for your patience on that. I'd like to go over the service awards for today, this month. First, Mark Nanette, twenty years of service. He was hired in two thousand as a dispatcher for the police department. Congratulations, Mark, on twenty years. Levi Alley, ten years of service. He was hired in two thousand and ten as a firefighter EMT for the fire department. Became a firefighter EMT dash P in two thousand and fifteen. Thank you, Levi, for ten years. Jessica Masney, five years of service. Was hired in two thousand and fifteen as an HR tech for the HR department and Parks and Recreation Department. Thank you, Jessica, for five years. Tyler Ficken, five years of service. He was hired in two thousand and fifteen as a city clerk for the city of Fremont. Tyler, we have a little award here for you. So congratulations, sir. I'll stand up. Thank you. Can always count on you being here, Tyler. All right, next we have is Jesse Headed. Five years of service, hired in two thousand and fifteen as a police officer for the police department. So Jesse, are you, are you here, Jesse? All right, come on up. Congratulations. Congratulations to all five of those employees on their accomplishment. Next, I would just like to briefly mention, you know, Three Rivers and our community is starting to roll out the vaccine. And I just want to kind of mention their, their recent press release. And they're happy to report they're in the process of getting individuals vaccinated for COVID nineteen using the phased approach that has been laid out by the Nebraska Department of Health and Human Services. Currently, they're working through phase one A, tier two, and three. Phase one A and tier two includes the following categories: primary care, nursing, primary care physicians, and home health, staff, hospice. Additionally, we are working through phase one A, tier three, that includes the following categories: pharmacy, oral surgeons, dentists, dental assistants, hygienists, and school nurses. Please remember that the vaccine is not available to the general public yet and be patient. Want to thank Three Rivers for all their help organizing, getting all this done. And again, thanks for your patience. And that's definitely some good news for, for our community. Next, I'd like to go over just, you know, I know during the campaign, one of my goals was to have a retreat, get us all together. And I do have one scheduled for council. We will be doing a retreat on Saturday, January sixteenth, from eight to noon here in the council chambers. So working on the talking points and agenda. But most likely it'll be about the comprehensive plan, CIP one and six, and just going over our goals here. I would encourage council, if you haven't got a copy of the prior comp plan and long-term transportation plan, Parks and Rec Master Plan, take a look at those. There'd be good, good guides as we kind of have those discussions, good starting points. And yeah, they are on the web as well. So as the new year approaches, I am focused on, on setting goals for the city for the next four years. We do have a lot of work to do. What I'm going to do is ask all of council and myself to reach out to the public over the next couple of weeks and get their thoughts on their goals for Fremont. I'm going to be doing that as well. And love to have you bring a one-page summary of those responses and your, your goals as well to the retreat so we can go over those. Goals should be related to things in the comp plan regarding growth and development, Fremont facilities, roads, parks, other improvements that can be made to improve the lives of our citizens. So our end goal here, to make Fremont the best place to live, work, and raise a family. So thanks again, council, for your help in that. And I look forward to a good retreat. Again, it'd be Saturday, January sixteenth, eight to twelve. I know I've also got some comments on study sessions, when we're going to, you know, be adding those in. We'll, we'll be working on sort of a schedule for those here in the near future. So kind of stay tuned on that. So that is all for my comments. At this time, we will move on to public hearings. Item two, Resolution twenty twenty-two six zero, granting permission to
Missed one.
I'm sorry. My fault. Item one, motion to adopt current agenda for the December twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty regular meeting. Is there any changes by council to the agenda? If no changes, I would take a motion to approve the agenda. Councilman Gibson.
I make the motion to adopt the current agenda for December twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty.
Councilwoman Ganem.
Second that motion.
Please cast your votes to approve the agenda.
Motion carries eight zero, Mayor.
Moving on to public hearings. Item two, Resolution twenty twenty-two six zero, granting permission to apply for community development block grant funding on behalf of Lifehouse for the remodel of their emergency shelter, authorizing the mayor to sign application for CDBG funds and proceed with the formulation of any and all contract documents and other memoranda between the city of Fremont and the Nebraska Department of Economic Development so as to effect acceptance of the grant application. This time we'll have staff report.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Lottie Mitchell, Grant Coordinator. Tonight, we are here seeking permission to apply for community development block grants on behalf of Lifehouse for the remodel of their emergency shelter. The state of Nebraska did make available community development block grants related to coronavirus response. And a unit, a local unit of government, meaning the city or the county, must be the applicant for community development block grants. But with the coronavirus funding, they have said that local units of government may enter into an agreement with a nonprofit to channel those funds to the nonprofit, to the program provider, and in this case is Lifehouse. Lifehouse worked with the city to develop a pre-application. We submitted that to the state earlier this year. And we heard on December sixteenth that we have been invited to submit a full application. Prior to submitting a full application, a public hearing is required. And that is why we are here this evening, to allow the public to make input and comments on our upcoming application should that permission be granted to apply. The remodel would involve the remodeling of the men's wing at the homeless shelter. Currently, it is designed to house up to twenty individual, single men. They have one communal restroom. With the COVID nineteen restrictions, they have had to reduce their number of residents at the shelter because of this configuration. They would like to remodel it, adding an additional restroom and reconfiguring that wing to accommodate for these restrictions. So we are requesting the maximum amount the grant allows of four hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. Within that, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars will be used for the remodel of the shelter. Ten thousand dollars will be used for construction management and twenty-five thousand dollars will be used for general administration. Matching and leverage funds are not required as part of this application. Any project cost overages will be provided by Lifehouse. An agreement between the city of Fremont and Lifehouse will be brought back before you, the city council, and before the Board of Directors of Lifehouse prior to submitting the full application, as that will be a requirement of the application, that we have that agreement in place before we submit. And at this time, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Lottie? Councilman Leggman.
I just want to make sure that the city is not responsible for any of this money. If something happens with the lighthouse and they can't finish what they're doing, the projects, we're not responsible for anything, right?
Our agreement will cover all of those requirements, yes.
Thank you.
Councilman Yurger.
I hope I don't step on item two at the same time I'm asking questions on item one. So bear with me. So we're doing a four hundred and eighty-five thousand dollar request of the state. And it's specifically for the remodel, as you indicated, for Lifehouse on the North Broad Street address. And primarily for redesign of their facility and the addition of the bathroom. And, and, and the four eighty-five breakdown is what we're being asked to do in this particular item. Is, is this an item, a standalone item?
This is a standalone application, yes. Yep.
Not tied to anything in item two?
There'll be two separate grant applications.
Okay, so my question is this then. The they noticed a, a public hearing that's attached to the packet item, if mine's correct, says that this is for the remodel of the food pantry, which would be for item two. And so unless my packet was developed out of order, is there two separate notices? One for the food pantry and one for the shelter? Are they going to be noticed at the same time?
They're both, grant applications are spelled out in the notice of public hearings. The first, the second paragraph of the notice of public hearing is for the remodel of the food pantry. The second paragraph is the remodel of the homeless shelter.
Okay, so, so even though they're on the same notice, they're two different standalone applications for the state?
That's correct.
Okay. So I think that probably takes care of my questions on this one. Because the resolution does specifically indicate that we're spending, we're doing the four hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars for the shelter aspects of the seven twenty Broad Street. So my questions really are on the next one and I'll hold those till we get to item two. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? This time we'll open up the public hearing. Any comments from the public? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Any additional comments from council? Seeing none, I would take a motion in regards to this item. Councilman Coons.
Make a motion to approve the item.
Councilman Leggman.
No, second that.
Please cast your votes.
The motion carries eight zero mayor.
Moving on to item three, resolution 2020 dash two six one granting permission to apply for community development block grant funding on behalf of Life House for the remodel of their food pantry and authorizing the mayor to sign application for CDBG funds and proceed with the formulation of any, all contract documents and other memoranda between the city of Fremont and the Nebraska Department of Economic Development so as to affect acceptance of the grant application. At this time, we'll have staff report.
Lottie Mitchell, Grant Coordinator. Again, we are holding the public hearing for a requirement for community development block grant funds. These are the same funds as we discussed in the previous item. It's in response to coronavirus. Again, a unit of local government must be the applicant for this type of funding, but the state has allowed government to sign agreement with a nonprofit to conduit those funds to the program provider. And again, in this, in this case, it is Life House for the remodel of their food pantry at 549 North H Street. We will again request the full $485,000 that is allowed by the grant application. $450,000 will be used for the remodel of the pantry. $10,000 for construction management, $25,000 for general administration. Matching funds are not required. Any cost overages would be the responsibility of Life House and that will be spelled out in our agreement that will be coming back to you and their board prior to submitting our application. At this time, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Lottie? Councilman Yerger.
Well, I thought I had a question, but I think you answered it during your discussion and that is, this is the request for the maximum amount allowed, not specifically the charges that it will take necessarily due to remodel. So apparently in both cases, the previous one and this one, the cost of renovations is in excess of 485,000. We're seeking the max.
We are seeking the maximum grant award. They are still working on getting those cost estimates. And so for our public hearing, our intent, should the costs come in at the grant, a maximum grant amount or above, we will have covered our bases in letting the public know we intend to apply for the maximum. Should those project costs come in below, we would apply for less.
I, thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions for staff? This time we'll open the public hearing on resolution 2020 dash two six one. Any comments from the public? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Any additional comments from council? Councilman Yerger.
Just one last question with regards to this. So we're authorizing the application, but others are vetting this for purposes of meeting standards. So we don't have any issues as council with regards to this meets the standard, the state is going to do the testing for meets the standard for the distribution of funds, correct?
We will be following their guidelines.
We're just following the application.
Correct.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Ganim.
I move we accept the resolution 2020 dash two sixty one.
Councilman Sukram.
I'll second that.
Please cast your votes.
Motion carries eight zero mayor.
Moving on to the consent agenda, all items in the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or a citizen so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Are there any items to be removed by either council, staff or the public for further discussion? Councilman Sukram.
Sorry.
Councilman Yerger.
I'd like discussion on item five and number seven at this time.
Any other items? Seeing none, I would take a motion to approve consent agenda.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Susan Jacobus, 1805 North D Street here in Fremont. I would ask that number four for two items of question on the financials. And then also number eight, may oral appointments be taken off for discussion? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other items? Seeing none, I would move to approve consent agenda items six, nine, 10 and 11. Take a motion in regard to that. Councilman Jensen.
I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda items number six, nine, 10 and 11.
Councilman Coons. Please cast your votes.
Motion carries eight zero mayor.
Moving on, item four, motion to approve December 9th, 2020 through December 29th, 2020 claims and authorized checks to be drawn on proper accounts. This time we'll have staff report. Tony, on.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. Can you hear me?
Hold on one second. Okay, go ahead.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So the, the listing of claims is there before you. I would point out that there was a voided check within that group. Let me see if I can find it quickly here to direct you to the page. It's not very far down. On page thirty of your agenda, there appears an invoice or Adams and Sullivan for $64,882.50. That's simply a void and a reissue of the same dollar amount. Those are from invoices for October and November that were delayed in the mail. And so we voided and reissued that check for them. Otherwise, I'll just take questions.
Any questions for our finance director? Any comments from the public?
Thank you. Susan Jacobus, 1805 North D Street here in Fremont, Nebraska. I did have a question. I noticed on here we have engineering being paid for HDR for the wastewater treatment plant. And in today's utility infrastructure board discussions, it was disclosed that there were two leaks at the waste lagoon sites. One of them was in the sewage retention that's now full. And the other one has just water in it. There are leaks there that haven't been addressed. And I wondered how that ties into paying HDR and who the construction company is and where those payments land. So that was my question to you, Jody. What is, and to Mr. Newton, was the responsibility of HDR in regarding to the leaking waste lagoons, the anaerobic lagoons that we have out there? Because that seems to me that that's an issue of concern and they're already behind the construction. So that lends us behind in inspections and that puts us even farther behind in full use of them. And are there any issues of concern for Whole Stone or for Costco due to the leaking lagoons? And at what point do we notify surrounding property owners who may have private wells and private well usage for their farming practices as well as their domestic use for their homes? So to me, this is a huge red flag and issue of concern that was brought up during the utility infrastructure board meeting. And I saw that there was payout for the engineering design for this. But if we have leaks, how is that going to be addressed? And do we need to pay this? Is it something that we need to hold back on? Because I believe there's a penalty clause built into those contracts for not complete. And please correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Newton.
You are incorrect. Brian Newton, city administrator, you are incorrect. The leaks are, are being captured in the containment system. And that's what Keith reported at the UIB meeting, that there are two lagoons that have leaks. They're being captured in the containment system. That's why we know it's leaking. So there is absolutely no threat to any groundwater or any other system around there. As Keith explained at the UIB meeting, we're still working with the contractor. The contractor has not closed the project and so we'll be working with them on those leaks.
The question remains then, where are we at with the engineering and the design? And as far as being behind in schedule, do we have any penalties built in place for non-complete? Because at this point, they are behind, I think Keith said approximately a year. By the time this gets done, it'll be eighteen months behind schedule.
They are behind. I think the penalty in the contract is $7,500 a day. And so they're racking up substantial bills for being delayed.
But that's the contractor.
For that, is that for HDR and for the construction or just construction?
That's just PWI's. HDR is just the design. And so I think your question on the bill was, is just HDR, right, Jody?
Right. And this portion where we're paying HDR is for the new work for that third lagoon. Is, is the, the majority of this billing, it doesn't have to do with, because they've already engineered and designed and engineered the first two that, that Keith referenced.
So we amended the HDR contract. This is getting prepped for Whole Stone coming on. So that's what the bill's for.
And the other question I had, Jody, was in regards to the final progress payment for the design of the joint law enforcement center. Did we get full payout on the land itself purchased by the county? And does this $158,260 reflect only the city side? Or is that inclusive of also what the county owes back to us in total?
Um, the amount that's there includes the amount that the county will be reimbursing the city. I believe that amount is approximately $130,000. I think there's probably two lines that you see there. And the smaller amount would be the cities, the remaining city share. And then the other larger piece is what will be billed to the sheriff's department for their part.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the public? Any comments from council? Councilman Leggman.
Seeing no other questions, I make a motion to approve.
Councilman Coons.
And I'll, that motion.
Please cast your votes.
Motion carries eight zero mayor.
Item five, dispense with and approved December 8th, 2020 city council meeting minutes. This time we'll have staff report.
The minutes have been prepared for the meeting for December 8th, 2020. I think council member Yerger may have had a question or maybe there's a correction that needs to be made.
I have a question and a correction. At the last meeting before the prior council left, they approved that set of minutes from the prior meeting. And my question really was in that regard. I think we ended up putting in a revised exhibit into the agenda packet that amended the minutes that we ultimately approved, that we didn't amend those on the fly or receive that document into the record at the meeting. It was already in the packet, therefore it's accurate in our current minutes to say we just approved those minutes rather than we approved the amended minutes. I know originally it was published with an issue that we had to rectify before the old council could approve them. And we did that. It's not noted in the record here and I'm not sure whether we needed to note it. That's, that's a question, Tyler. And, and the other one is a correction that needs to be made to item twenty eight in the agenda or in the minutes. Item twenty eight indicates that there was a motion made and it's indicated that it was, had to do with the no through, no through truck, truck traffic amendment. And that amendment was credited to council member Sukram and seconded by Mr. Leggman. I actually made that motion. And I think according to the tape, it was seconded by Mr. Coons. I think it was his desire to have that and I think I made that motion at his behest and I think he was the second.
So for the initial item, I don't recall that off the top of my head. So I'd have to revisit the minutes from the time prior to kind of untangle that. And then this item, you could, you could make an amendment to make those changes. Or I could take these minutes, post them to the website as a draft, revise them and bring them back at the next meeting to, for the board to consider.
And, and I don't have a preference or a deference if the council wants to do it on the fly or if they, if the clerk needs time to review the first one, we could just well bring it back for approval at the next meeting. I'm fine with that as well. And I'm happy to make that motion if you'd like.
Well, the motion is to have Tyler approve the, the minutes with the correction and bring them back, bring it back to the next meeting. There's a motion on the floor for that. I would take a second in that regard. Councilman Jensen.
Yeah, I'll make that second.
Cast your votes.
Motion carries eight zero mayor.
Okay, moving on to item seven. Resolution 2020 dash two six three to allow for the billing of fire services of the fire, Fremont Fire Department and adoption of a fee schedule. This time we'll have staff report.
Todd Burn, fire chief. What you see in front of you is a resolution that needs to be approved annually as according to state statute. We bill for structure fires, vehicle fires, motor vehicle accidents and there's a, and most insurance companies have a provision for emergency response and that's where we collect the fees for, for those type of incidents. Last year, we collected almost 25,000 in fees and I'll take any questions that you have.
Any questions for Chief Burn? Councilman Yerger.
Yes, I pulled this off chief because I did have a couple of questions. I think we dialogued about this last year and I just wanted to follow up on some of those questions from that time. So the current, I'm curious as to whether or not the current fees that we're looking at here and putting into place again for another year are whether they cover fire department costs. Prior indications when we had this discussion, I think a year ago was, yeah, they don't.
They still don't.
We're, we're working towards that goal, but they don't cover costs today. And so since we're not changing the fees and we're also not incrementally increasing the fees to help move towards the goal of covering cost, I'm wondering why not?
With the insurance companies, a lot of the insurance companies don't have that provision in there. So when we bill a certain insurance company, if they may have zero, so we may not even collect anything for that type of fire or vehicle accident or anything like that. So it's all dependent on what's in the policy that the individual gets when he buys the property and stuff like that. Some insurance companies have up to, you can collect the most is like 2,000. Some of them are 500 and some are really at zero is what you collect.
So that answers part of my second question. And that is insurance companies don't always pay what we have established in fees anyway. They could and they might, but they don't necessarily have to if they have limits. But to my point of, we haven't made any adjustment to the fees in order to help migrate us to the cost level so that we would be recovering cost. And that's still concerns me, I guess, because we ought to be moving to that end. I know we're not a profit center, but we ought to be moving to cover costs, whether we get reimbursed for it at full value when we bill it or not, we ought to be. We ought to be charging for as much as we can get relative to our cost. And the other thing is, with regards to the statements in the report, if the party has no insurance, they don't personally pay the charges?
No, they don't.
We just write those off?
We write those off, and a lot of times, well, their insurance company will write our billing company a letter saying, we don't have that type of provision in our insurance. And we are actually unique to a lot of other fire departments. We act, we're the only fire department that bills for structure fires, vehicle fires. Omaha, I think they only bill for hazmat incidents, motor vehicle accidents. Grand Island, they only bill for motor vehicle accidents. I think Norfolk, I don't believe they bill at all, and there's some that don't bill. But when it comes to type of billing we do, we're actually unique, where we actually bill a lot more than what a lot of the other fire departments do. And in conversations that I had with our billing company, it's been, hey, about seven, eight months, we're too, our billing rates are considerably high to some of the other clients they have that do the fire billing. They say we're on the high end of what we do.
So we're on the high end, but not recouping our costs yet for purposes of giving the citizens the benefit of that?
And a lot of our, a lot of our motor vehicle accidents are really non-billable. One thing you have to prove, and our billing company says that's probably one of the hardest billing things that you can do, because you have to prove that you actually did something on scene. I mean, if our guys show up, we're only there just, just for a few minutes with an engine. We're only billing for a fire engine. The ambulance is not. So it has to be with an engine or something like that, an aerial. And sometimes we get multiple runs going off. They may stop and assist, maybe just for a few minutes, and they're off to another run. So a lot of these, even though we have about a hundred and forty motor vehicle accidents a year, only a small portion are actually billable.
I thank you for your candid responses tonight. I would only hope that at some point we do begin to migrate towards covering our cost as a part of the operation. That should be a goal. Regardless of whether we get to collect it or we have to write it off, we at least ought to be striving to have rates that, and fees that are cost-based. So my challenge is that we should continue to look into that. Thanks.
And Todd, if I may add, remember, it's just a reimbursement of costs. There's no write-offs. If we don't bill and they don't pay, taxpayers paid for that. So it's a reimbursement of our costs that we're collecting. And again, if we don't collect, it's still a taxpayer expense as part of running the department.
Any other questions for Chief? Councilman Coons?
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Councilman Legband? Before we vote, we do need any comments from the public on this item. Thank you. Any comments from the public? Seeing none, any additional comments from council? It has been motioned and seconded, so go ahead and cast your votes.
Motion carries eight zero, Mayor.
Moving on to item eight, mayoral appointments. Obviously, my item. Obviously, over the last few weeks, we had a lot of board vacancies on a lot of different boards. I think there's something like seventeen different boards in the city. And obviously, there wasn't a lot of appointments that were made with the prior mayor, and a lot was left to me. I tell you, I worked extremely hard reaching out to these folks. And this is a volunteer, you know, folks volunteer on these boards and give of their time. And so before you tonight, I'm really proud of the group of folks that we have willing to serve on these boards. And I think they'll do a great job. And so again, I'm proud of these people on here and there, and then thank them for their willingness to serve Fremont and help us continue to make it a great place to live, work, and raise a family. We're all in this together. We're a team, and our boards are definitely a part of that. So that's my report. Are there any comments from the public?
Do or don't? Sorry, okay. Susan Chikovas, one eight zero five North D Street, Fremont, Nebraska. The reason I asked for this to be polled is, I listened to some of the speeches you made, Mayor, and you had asked for community involvement. And I think this would be the perfect opportunity to do so. One of the issues I have with a myriad of these appointments is that they aren't staggered. You should never fully replace the entire board or committee at any point. You should always lend on at least a year or two experience to move forward with new appointments. And the other issue of concern is, these are new appointments, which have been vacant purposely for you to be able to fill, but also to notify the public that there are open positions. So that community involvement, that engagement that you spoke of highly, this would be a perfect opportunity to do so. And rather than consider following through on all of these tonight, open it up, let the public know that there are positions that are vacant and open, and what the purpose of these are, because people have been uninvolved for a long time. And I don't take issue with anybody in particular on any of your appointments. In fact, I don't know most people in Fremont. I just take issue that people don't understand that there's vacancies. They don't all understand what the purpose of those boards or committees are. And something that got left to the wayside over the years is that there should be council representation on some of these. And for one of them, the Ridge Board, there is no council representation. And these committees and these boards and these groups should report back to the council, even if nothing else, with information that's been typed and included in your agenda on a monthly basis. Basically, if the parks and board meet, there should be something that comes out of that meeting that gets presented to the council. So the council and yourself are kept fully aware. But my ask is that this be continued and be opened up to the public, and for some information to be given to the public, whether on the radio and/or in the newspaper, and also on social media. So that people are aware that these positions are open, and that some of those that have some expertise in these various fields can step up if they choose to do so. And if not, it'll at least give you consideration on how to best stagger some of these positions. Because right now, there are several in here that aren't staggered, and they should be. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Any additional comments from council? Councilman Legband?
I just want to say, I called the mayor, and we discussed in depth some of these. And I was very impressed at the work and time and effort that you put in. And these are mayoral appointments, and I was very impressed at everything you did. And if there's no more comments, I would like to make a motion to approve the mayoral appointments.
Councilman Coons?
I don't second that motion.
There were other comments. We didn't get a chance to speak.
There are other council members wanting to speak before we entertain that all. Councilman Yurger, go ahead.
I appreciate the information that was just conveyed with regards to staggering of the various board members. I did see that some of these obviously are several appointments. They're all leaving and expiring at the same time, that it is odd, to say the least. The other thing is that some positions have been held and reappointed for, you know, multiple years. And I do think that, I agree with the statement made, that one of the goals that was discussed during the course of the campaign was to make sure that Fremont was involved. And this is not new. These are issues that we raised with the previous mayor as well, with regards to reappointing the same individuals over and over again versus making sure that we've given due deference to those that applied. Because my understanding is, there has been a running application list available to the city, and I wondered whether or not you availed yourself to that. I do like the concept as well as, since we are doing so many of these, if this had been put out in the public, that's an interesting concept, to make sure that people that wanted to put their name in for consideration had ample opportunity to do that as an alternative. You might still come up with the same recommendations, I understand. But it would have been nice to at least have the public know that there were vacancies, and a lot of them. And if they had expertise or desire to serve, they would have had an opportunity to update their applications or to make a first-time application. And so I tended to agree a lot with what I just heard. And I know there's a motion on the floor, but the suggestion was that we should continue this to the next meeting to allow accommodation to adjust for end dates that are not all the same, and/or to consider other applications. And quite honestly, I favor that approach, and I'd like to see this continued to the next meeting to allow the mayor to consider other applications that might be available and/or to adjust the staggering of this so that all of these people don't leave at the same time on certain of these boards. So I don't know how we do that with a motion that got put on the floor before I had an opportunity to comment, and whether or not a motion to continue is considered an amendment to what was on the floor. I guess I'd ask the legal counsel as to where we go.
You always have the privilege motion of being able to say, to table it, but you should probably table it to a time definite, and then they can vote on that. And if that passes, then it would be tabled to that time. If it doesn't pass it, then the other motion would still be on the floor.
Okay, I would raise that privilege motion to continue this to the next meeting, to give the mayor an opportunity to adjust some of the end dates so that they stagger, and to give the public an opportunity to be notified that there are a lot of expiring and vacant terms that are being filled in this consent agenda item, because there's like eleven boards that are being filled simultaneously here. And in the past, we had to address these one by one. So I make a motion to continue to the next meeting.
All I can say to that is, again, these are mayoral appointments, and I thought long and hard about each board. I reached out to those members serving and asked if they would like to serve again, if they were passionate about the specific board or specific organization or whatever they were doing. And again, put in the due diligence on every single one of these boards, getting these in the right positions to be successful. I'm getting very proud of the folks that I have presented. They're very passionate about Fremont and our growth and development, as well as just Fremont in general. And again, this is a volunteer position. You know, I spent most of my three weeks here as mayor trying to work through all these and get confirmations and get the right people on there. So I am very happy and comfortable with this, my appointments. And this is, there's a privileged motion. Again, I would, to table this, because of code, I need to, you know, we need to move forward that and vote on that, on that motion. So is there, we need a second? So is there a second on that privileged motion? Councilman Coons?
Mayor?
Yes.
Just one other comment. The staggering, we could always resolve after the fact as well. But if you've got a lot of vacancies in these offices, they do need to be functional as well.
And also, we gave you a copy of the list of folks that had put their names in from the web, so you have that.
Yes, I did have that as well, yep.
Councilman Coons?
No, I wasn't going to second that. I was just going to make a comment. We've been down this road so many times. This is just another attempt to take part of the power away from the mayor. And I think we still need to consider the original motion.
Councilwoman Gannam?
I do appreciate that the mayor also was including the city council, kind of as ad hoc board members on a variety of these committees. So that does include that. Additionally, if you certainly want, there were people that expressed interest, and you do have that list, it sounded that way, that I think the staggering is a good suggestion, and perhaps some of these people could be staggered in appointments and advertising for these positions down the line.
Well taken. Is there a second for the privileged motion? Motion dies for lack of second. Going back to the original motion and second. Cast your votes.
Motion carries seven one, Mayor.
Okay, moving on to unfinished business. Item twelve, Councilmember Yurger, item ordinance to amend Fremont Municipal Code, Chapter four dash Health and Sanitation, Article one, General Provisions, Section four dash one oh one, four dash two oh one, four dash two oh two, and four dash six oh one. This time we'll have a report from Councilman Yurger.
Yes, this was carried over from the previous meeting for discussion. Modified language to the specific sections of the Fremont Municipal Code were offered at the last meeting, having been reviewed by City Legal. And the copy that's in your packet material tonight reflects the red line that was offered, including the, if you have color copy, I don't know if you do, the blue line were the additions added by City Legal in order to attempt to further clarify Chapter four, Article one, sections that are before you. Part of the reason for thinking that this was necessary was that other cities approached their health mandates or their health directives in a slightly different fashion than we did, offering much more public comment, a much more council debate and participation. And with the changes that were offered by City Legal to the ordinance that we have, which was largely crafted from code that Papillion had in their municipal code, you'll notice that what it does is that it actually gives the council an opportunity, at least, to hold some discussion on these matters. And actually, we could self-initiate if we wanted. When this originally came to council, it came as a resolution, and the council could have acted. We sent it over to the Board of Health, and they acted. But our city code didn't really reflect that opportunity. And with the changes that were offered by Mr. Jakot, it now says, in accordance with state law, the Board of Health can act or the city council can act. And that would seem to be appropriate, that we should be able to act. It also helps ensure the opportunity, I think, that in the future, we might do a better job of allowing for public input and council input and have public debate so that there's community buy-in to what we're doing. State law certainly gives that authority to the Board of Health, not to that. But certainly, there may be times when the city council itself wants to make action without even having to send it to the Board of Health. And we could have initially, at the very first onset, with the resolution that it was before us. But our city code wasn't clear there. And so this is an attempt to try to, excuse me, modify that and to make sure that it's clear. They're not substantive, still in accordance with state law, but does counsel some flexibility there to at least have some debate and some public input on these matters. And so for that, I would offer this ordinance for, is for first reading.
Any questions for Councilman Yurger? Councilman Gibson?
Yeah, I thought, Councilman Yurger, your interpretation of the code is quite correct, and I agree with it, except we are in a pandemic, and I don't think this is a time to revise anything to do with health codes. I think we should put this off. Hopefully, things will get better, and then some of that language, I think, can be considered by us. But this time, I don't think we should be doing anything about health and welfare as long as we've got this pandemic. That's my opinion.
Councilman Coons?
Yeah, I was going to second what Councilman Gibson said. My concern, we are in the middle of a pandemic, and I don't think this is the time. of a pandemic and I don't think this is the time to be taking a little cruise down work game lane. And I think we should give the Board of Health the power that they've already had without any interruptions.
Any other comments from council? Councilwoman Gannam?
We did have the opportunity to direct it to the Board of Health and they did come back with the recommendation. Well, they didn't have to recommend to us. They came back with a directive and we asked them for their input and to make a decision and they did with a lot of input. The Department of Health, when they do meet, is also open to the public and comments can be made and can be heard at that time. They did reach out to 22 of our partners and granted, they are more special interest groups like the hospital chamber. I understand that, but there was quite a bit of input and I would certainly, it's a little bit different board because we do have elected officials on there. The president serves on that as well as the mayor. And with their input, I certainly would adhere to their guidance. They didn't need to come back and relate to us again. There was a directive and it appears to be working very well. So I don't see changing something that is working for Fremont.
Councilman Yurger?
I'd just like to respond to the concerns that council has expressed with regards to, we're trying to change something in the middle of a pandemic or the like. This does nothing to take away any responsibility or obligation to the Board of Health, which is basically established by state law. And, and their provisions, as I understood Mr. J Cott's input, Papillion's language, our language as well, essentially gave authorities to the Board of Health to do that. What it didn't do is allow us, if we chose to then, or even now, or in the future, for the council to take action on their own, should they choose to, without even going with a recommendation to the Board of Health, we could do those same kinds of things ourselves if we chose to. With this language modification is certainly not intended to take away anything from the Board of Health that's statutorily provided for. That's not the goal. The goal is to see whether or not council could take action of its own volition on some of these matters. And with the language that's being proposed, as I understood Mr. J Cott's input to me, this would do it. So it certainly doesn't diminish anything that the Board of Health is doing or has done or might do in the future. It just opens the door for council to take action on certain of these matters itself, and that would seem to be appropriate. And we'd be doing so in a more public forum where public input typically is given when we have these meetings ourselves. So that's the rationale. It certainly was not intended and is not intended to take away any, any power from the Board of Health.
Councilman Ellis?
Yeah, like Councilman Yurger just said, I, I don't believe this is going to take away anything from the Board of Public Health. What, what was disappointing to me during this process was the ability to get public input. I saw public input in Papillion, Norfolk, they had, you know, multiple open public meetings, they had public input. In Fremont, there was no public input. We had our Board of Health meet with no public access and made a decision. And so that's where I think just some clarification on our part as far as changing our municipal code just a little bit. It's not going to take away any, any power from the Board of Health. It's just simply going to put some, put some stuff in place that he, that Councilman Yurger worked with our legal department to make sure that it kind of matched up with Papillion and what they did. And, and so that's what I think we're looking at here is we're not trying to take away any power. We're simply trying to put some stuff in place that would make public input a little bit more of a priority going forward.
Yes.
Just a couple of points of clarity. State statute still allows the city council to make those decisions. Secondly, the Board of Health meeting was a public meeting. It was published and it was open to the public for comment.
Any other comments from council? Councilman Ellis?
I understand that the Board of Health meeting was public, but there was public there that wanted to talk and at no time were they given the opportunity. So that's, that was a little bit of frustration. I sent people there saying that, yes, it's a public meeting, but at no time was the public ever asked for comment. So that was my frustrating.
Councilman Yurger?
I think I offered a motion for the floor, but if I didn't, I want to be clear. This, this is for first reading of this ordinance only. Council still has ample opportunity in two more readings to consider and digest this further if we move this along tonight. So if you have any reservations, but you think there might be some improvement here with what little change is being made, then I would encourage us to move first reading and we can have further discussion on it in the next two readings. It's not something that becomes effective immediately. Anyway, it's being offered for dialogue at first reading and I make that motion.
Before we get to that, there's a motion. Is there a second? Oh, public comment? Okay. Yep. We'll have public comment at this time.
May I go ahead?
Yes, go ahead.
Susan Jacobus, 1805 North D Street, Fremont. First of all, I want to thank you for appointing Fire Chief Burnt to the Board of Public Health. That was a need for a long time. So I'm glad to see he's been brought to the table because he's got some expertise to lend. Secondly, I've been involved in one way or another in both paid and volunteer professional EMS, both on the fire trucks and the ambulances. And this Board of Public Health needs to act in a pandemic or any other situation, could have been held when it was the flooding, should you had had the need to bring together thousands of tetanus shots. I was also part of a community that had to do that and bring over 2,000 tetanus shots to the community because we all had to dig in and help on the cleanup. The Board of Public Health doesn't always have the time or the issues of concern that the council has to address. Yes, it's open to the public, but they have to be able to act emergently, which is why you have the president of your council involved, which is why you have the mayor involved, so that the public does get informed, which is why you have your medical director for the city involved, as well as the regulation and the one that has to do the enforcement, the police chief. And now you have the fire chief involved as well, which is awesome. The Board of Public Health needs to be autonomous. They need to be able to act as they, by Nebraska state statute, chapter 16 dash 238 have been allowed to do. And they need to continue to do so without further constraints. This doesn't denigrate any power or authority of the council or the mayor. This just has to be an autonomous group of people who are being tasked with making very difficult decisions during an epidemic or a pandemic, regardless of the issue of what hits our city of Fremont. They have to know they have the authority and the power to act in the best interest of all of Fremont. And I think we, as a Board of Health in the past, have done so, having never met before, for many years, in 20 years in fact, and it hit upon us on numerous occasions to do so. And what was expected happened. There was action taken for the betterment of Fremont. So I caution you on trying to reinvent the wheel or to change things midstream. Please don't break what's not broken.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Any comments from council? Councilman Jensen?
That's my, my last comment would just be an ask of legal, if they are happy with this language and those, the way that it's, the way that it's written before the, before the, the edits that Councilman Yurger is looking, if you're completely comfortable with it. Personally, I'm very comfortable the way things are right now. We did exactly what should have happened. They came through with a directive and it had some actual teeth to it, to where there were large fines and possible jail time to where we're not sending the police out and issuing a flurry of $25 meaningless tickets. But if they decide, if somebody in public decides to hold a completely contrary vendor tries to be openly defiant, it could be met with some teeth.
To answer your question, it's complaint with the law. It's just a matter of what the pleasure of the council wants to do.
Any other comments from council? Seeing none, I would take a motion to, there's a motion. Okay, there has been a motion to that effect for this, for first reading. Is there a second? Councilman Ellis?
A second.
Cast your votes.
Motion fails two to six, mayor.
Thank you. Moving on to item 13, new business. Motion authorizing mayor to sign Northern Natural Gas precedent agreement. This time we'll have staff report.
Troy Shabon, Assistant City Administrator Utilities. This is for purchase of additional capacity for our natural gas system. I know we've come here a couple of times before. I'll kind of reiterate what we are doing for the newer council members. The gas system, the way we get our gases, we purchase the gas off the market. BP is our marketer. So BP purchases our physical gas. Capacity is, capacity in a pipeline from the south. There are a series of pipelines coming basically from Texas that goes all over the United States. And there's a limited amount of area in that pipeline for natural gas. Everybody who uses natural gas purchases their prorated share of that capacity. Right now, city of Fremont in the summer has, has, has capacity for about 13,100 MMBtu a day. In the winter, we have capacity right now for 19,651 MMBtu a day. Our maximum day in the winter has been steadily climbing in the past few years. Three years ago, it was in the 16,000 range. Last year, we had a 19,000 day. We cannot exceed that 19,651. So you can see that capacity is an issue. We came to the council on October 11th and the council approved the purchase of additional capacity of 1,969 MMBtu per day. About a week after that happened, Northern came back to us and said, we may have more. So rather than sign the contract and come back and sign another smaller contract, we waited. We are actually having now an additional 880 DecaTherm's a day, which brings the total amount to 2849. That's additional DecaTherm's a day, a DecaTherm a day and an MMBtu a day are about exactly the same thing. The council has already approved the 1,969. What we're doing is kind of getting rid of that and saying this new agreement is for the combination of the two. I give kind of my speech that I always give on capacity. Natural gas is the one utility that we really don't control. Electricity, you know, we've got our power plant, we can generate. And then with the new tie line to Blair, we can actually import 200 additional megawatts if we need it. We can import green energy. We can do a lot of things with that tie line. There were some smart people in the past that purchased the well field property, which is where all of our drinking water comes from. Fremont could triple in size and we would never come close to the capacity that well size. We have an additional 40 acres that we just purchased at our wastewater treatment plant. There's probably 50 years of expansion available out there. Natural gas, we buy it from somebody else and it's transported by somebody else. This capacity in the pipeline has typically been harder to get. Northern has in the past only offered capacity maybe once every three or four years. They've had capacity openings multiple times now in the last two years. We don't come forward with all of them because honestly, the costs aren't justified. You'll see with this one, what we're doing is we're actually contributing to Northern and giving them contribution to aid and construction for some of the improvements that they're making. That will give them additional capacity in the pipeline. That pipeline will be ours because we are paying for those capital improvements for them. You'll see here that the cost of that is about eight, 8.68 cents per DecaTherm per day. Typically, that number's in the 15 to 20 cents per DecaTherm per day. So this is, I'd say, half of what we would normally pay. And it's one of the reasons why the council approved it on August 11th. What we're asking for in the 868 is just a continuation of that. It's at the same price. It will give us an additional 2,849 DecaTherm's per day in the winter, which will take us up to, you know, roughly in that 22,500 range. Our maximum, our maximum usage days that we've had so far, don't take into account any of the homes in Sun Ridge or Morningside Crossing or Morningside Place or Gallery 23 or any of the new construction that you're seeing going up. Those are all going to add on to that 19,000 maximum day that we've hit. So honestly, if this is approved tonight and something comes up in the next three months, I'm coming back because this is only, this puts us about 10 to 15% above our maximum. I'd like to be in the 25 to 33% range, you know, for capacity. Typically, when you upscale engineering projects, you want to be 25 to 35%. Generally should give you 25 years, 20 years of capacity. Obviously, the growth Fremont seen in the last three years, you know, all bets are off now. But if, if they were to come back next month with this exact same deal, honestly, I'm going to come back and ask for more because I don't even think this is enough. I will say one, one more comment and then I can try to answer any questions. The recommendation says city administrator, the, the, the number on the, on the council agenda and the contract reference, mayor signing it. So I apologize that. I don't know if it has to be an addendum, but if the council can, or the council chooses to approve this, maybe the motion can be just have the mayor authorize or authorize the mayor to sign the contract because that's what the, the agenda and the contract actually have in it. But I can try to answer any questions if anybody hasn't.
Thank you, Troy, for your thorough report there. Councilman Coons?
Yeah, Troy, you know, I read through this item several times. I even printed it out and read through it again. I had a lot of misunderstanding, or not misunderstanding, confusion on my part, I guess. I just wanted to applaud you for doing an excellent job describing it to me, answered all my questions. And you've done outstanding job doing that. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Any comments from the public? Any comments from council? Councilman Jensen?
If there is no further comment, I'll make the motion to authorize the mayor to sign the Northern National Gas Agreement.
Councilman Sukram?
I'll second that.
Please cast your votes.
The motion carries eight zero, mayor.
Thank you. Item 14, Resolution 2020 dash 266, approving a local option economic development loan for $200,000 to Fabrication Holdings LLC, doing business as Elemental Fabrication and Machine and authorizing the mayor to sign the appropriate loan transactions. At this time, we'll have staff report.
Mayor City Council, Lottie Mitchell, Grant Coordinator. We are before you tonight with an application of a hometown company that is growing and expanding. A little overview of our local option economic development fund. It was approved by voters for the purpose of creating new jobs, expanding the labor market. It was approved by voters for the purpose of creating new jobs, expanding the labor market, retaining existing jobs, attracting new investment, broadening our tax base and providing economic diversification to ensure stability and vitality for our community. Applications are submitted to this, to the plan administrator, which is the city. They are then reviewed by two committees, the Citizens Advisory Review Committee and the Local Option Review Team. The Citizens Advisory Review Committee reviews the application from the standpoint of compliance with the plan as it is regulated by state statute. The Local Option Review Team reviews the application from the standpoint of project feasibility, the potential future economic benefit to the community. Both committees then make recommendations to you, the city council, who has final approval of the application and award. So tonight, our application is from Fabrication Holdings LLC doing business as Elemental Fabrication and Machine or Elemental. They're a custom metal fabrication and machine shop specializing in custom stainless steel fabrication, replacement parts, repair, and repair services for food plants. They're moving from their current location at fourteen hundred Railroad Street. That's where the company was originally established in nineteen sixty-four. They're moving to twenty-two sixty-three Business Park Drive. The sale of the new facility is scheduled to close January fourth. The relocation will allow Elemental to expand and grow in all aspects of their offerings, including the amount of city taxable sales. Currently, they average three hundred and fifty thousand in city taxable sales annually. They anticipate this amount to grow as the new facility will allow for better advertisement and efficiency to conduct a greater amount of those sales. Their current location on Railroad Street is in the city limits and therefore we do collect on those sales tax, the tax on those sales. The new location on Business Park Drive is not in the city limits. However, Elemental has agreed to voluntarily annex into the city and has already started that process by communicating with the Dodge County Board of Supervisors. Who will be holding a public hearing on that request to leave the county industrial tract tomorrow. They'll be holding that public hearing. As part of the relocation and expansion, Elemental has committed to adding four neutral, new full-time benefited positions. The positions include one CAD draft tech position, one outside sales position, and two machinist fabricator positions. The wages are dependent upon experience, but range from forty-five thousand to sixty thousand annually. Two of these positions started the first week of December and will be counted towards those four new positions. The estimated cost for this project is two million seven hundred and sixty-nine thousand. Elemental is requesting two hundred thousand dollars from our fund. They are an eligible business under the, our plan as their principal source of income is derived from the manufacture of articles of commerce. We do recommend an award of two hundred thousand that is a hundred percent forgivel, forgiven based on performance measures listed here and contingent upon the closing of the sale of twenty-two sixty-three Business Park Drive. The performance measures are to retain the sixteen full-time positions they currently have for a period of five years. Create four new full-time jobs, again, two of which started the first week of December, and retain those positions for a period of five years from the date of creation and then executing the voluntary annexation into the city of Fremont. Mentioned earlier, the two committees, the Citizens Advisory Review Committee did review the application and recommends city council approve the application as submitted. The Local Option Review Team also recommends the same. Our current fund balance is one million thirty-seven thousand eight hundred sixty-seven dollars and sixty-eight cents and generates between seventy-five and ninety thousand dollars monthly. At this time, I would like to introduce Andrew Stamp, who is the operating manager, if I got that right, for Elemental to give you a little more in-depth overview, brief overview of Elemental and their expansion project. And then we would be happy to answer any questions you may have. Andrew.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Andrew Stamp. I'm a managing partner at Elemental. I've been there about five and a half years. Before that, I worked at Kelly Closure for fifteen years. So Elemental was originally founded as Pete's Custom Metal in nineteen sixty-four by Pete Bellhouser. His two great-grandsons are actually my business partners, so the business has stayed in the family for all these years. I took over running the day-to-day operations from Ken Burbach a year after I started, so I've been running it for four and a half years. I bought into the business last year. And so for the five and a half years that I've been there, we've really changed our focus from being more of a I say a small town welding shop, but I don't mean that in a negative aspect. We started to branch out from just very close to Fremont to wider area and we targeted food manufacturing plants. As we found, a lot of them really needed somebody local to provide them replacement parts and services because the equipment that they use typically comes from Europe and Japan. And to get parts and repairs from the OEM is prohibitively expensive and typically takes a long time. So we found a niche in targeting those markets. So we now call the top five food manufacturers in the world as our customers and that includes Kellogg, Tyson, Cargill, Hormel, and then JBS, which owns the plumrose plants in Council Bluffs. And then, of course, locally, we work with Holstone, Lincoln Premium Poultry, Fremont Beef, and Provimi. So we've really grown in that market. In the five years, we've not quite tripled our sales, but we're very close. I think we'll hit it next year. And we've done that all in our fifteen thousand square foot current facility. Anybody that's happened to have been down there can see that we're pretty much standing on top of each other. We were looking at, and I presented to you last year about adding on to our current facility down there. It became apparent that we'll probably outgrow that addition before we even had it paid for. So when we've heard that the Pipe Valley Equipment Building was becoming available, we realized that we needed to look at that very carefully. We were able to make an agreement to get that purchased. So we're moving from a one acre site to seventeen and a half acre site. It's gonna set us up for a lot of years of hopefully continued growth and success. So the loan that we're looking for is gonna contribute to the, what we call the tenant improvements, basically the improvements to the building. The biggest share of that is a new electrical service to handle manufacturing in that building as well as some other updates and remodeling. So yeah, if there's any, any questions?
Thank you. Any questions for Andrew or our grant coordinator, Councilman Coons?
I really don't have a question. I just have a comment and welcome you to your expansion. You mentioned that the partners were the great grandchildren of Pete's Custom Metal. I guess what it did to me was, you know, when I pushed out of high school, I worked as a motorcycle mechanic and I used to do work with Pete's Custom Metal. I hadn't realized it had been that long ago. Thanks for bringing that up.
Any other questions? Any other comments from the public?
Susan Jacobus, one eight zero five North D Street here in Fremont, Nebraska. Nothing derogatory, just thank you to Elementals for staying within Fremont and for considering annexation and separating from the county for that. My question was actually reserved more for Lottie. At the local option review team, there was a distribution of what the actual funds are. And discussion was had as far as the tech park and the nine hundred and seventy-five thousand payable possibly back. And in that part of the LBA forty funds, that it was mentioned that that is also earmarked out of that nine seventy-five to be paid back in rebate form. So that won't fully go back to your fund for use. If it doesn't get taken by the state, it'll actually be taken up majority by rebate in the form of when you sell the lambs. So just consider that, but this is, you know, neither here nor there. I attended the meeting. There is a hundred percent support for, this has been a local business and I'm sure there's no opposition at the council. I just want to say thank you to Elemental for staying within Fremont and growing.
Any other comments from the public? Any other comments from council? Councilman Yerger.
I'd like to echo the comments that were just made about your staying in Fremont and as I look through your application commitments, I also want to applaud you for a couple of other things that I think are fairly significant. You made a commitment to increase employees by twenty-five percent and to keep on, to keep a hold of those employees. That's, that's a significant contribution and, and should be recognized. Also, I think what, one of the most important things to me is your voluntary annexation commitment. That's really critical, I think, to the taxpayers of Fremont. To you, to have businesses like yourself within the city limits. And so I truly applaud you for making that commitment to the city as well. Certainly, you bring a considerable foresight business growth to the city of Fremont and the application seems to, to fit well with what we're doing in that regard. I, I noticed that this is contingent on your closing of the business. And, and I think Lottie said the Dodge County isn't meeting until tomorrow to approve your request to allow us to annex. Is that correct? Timing is, that's tomorrow?
They, the item was introduced at their December, would have been December ninth meeting in which they set the public hearing. It's just a formality. They were, yes, the public hearing is tomorrow for the voluntary annexation and that.
We have no expectation of opposition in that regard?
No.
If, if there was any anticipation of that, I would consider whether or not this could, should be contingent not only on the closing of the purchase agreement, but contingent on the county's approval. But if you think that's imminent, then maybe it's not necessary.
We don't anticipate any.
Alright, thank you.
Any other comments from council? I would take a motion in regards to this item. Councilman Coons?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the revolution twenty twenty dash two six six.
Councilman Jensen?
I will second that.
Cast your votes.
The motion carries eight zero, mayor.
Congratulations, Andrew, on your success. Wish you the best. Item fifteen, motion to approve lease agreement with ALO Communications at Fremont, Fremont Technology Park. This time we'll have staff report.
Mayor and City Council, Brian Newton, City Administrator. We have before you tonight a lease agreement. It's a temporary agreement. As I said in my staff report, we fully intend to follow up with the purchase agreement. But ALO wants to get going and get some of their head-end stuff installed out there. And so it takes us a council meeting, plus we have to have remonstrance petition in the paper for thirty days. And so it takes a while for us to get the purchase agreement done. Plus, it's a three-party agreement. It has to go to the county and to ALO. And so it's gonna take a little bit. They'd like to get going on this lot ahead of time. You know, it's in the picture, this is the third lot that's out there sold from this particular area. That's the reason, the reason why is because that's where the high-speed internet comes into town. They all tap it right there. And so that's the place that this needs to be. It's a hundred foot by a hundred foot, the same size as the existing two lots that are currently out there. And with that, I'll take any questions. And please notice that we amended it. Tyler sent a change out. I forgot to change the date. And so it should be January first, two thousand twenty-one.
Councilwoman Ganim. No problem. Any questions for staff? Any comments from the public? Any comments from council? Councilman Yerger.
I'd like to offer a consideration to amend the agreement only at the very end for it's kind of perfunctory, but I guess it seemed to me that it might be appropriate. You'll notice that ALO Communications contact is listed as their president, not name-specific. And I think with regards to the joint owners of Fremont being the city of Fremont and the county, it probably, instead of being person-specific, it ought to state Fremont City Administrator, Joint Owner Administration or Administrator. Because that's a generic title and that's what ALO did with regards to their agreement as well, would seem to be more appropriate. Given the fact that those could change from time to time, we never know. And, and so I would offer an amendment to, to change that to just be the city, city administrator, joint owner administrator.
Legal, is there any problems with that or?
I guess I would agree it's perfunctory, but it didn't make any difference to me.
Councilman Ellis?
I second that motion.
So, can you just clarify the motion again?
It's under section, it's under section eighteen, under notices. So it's just a contract where the notices would get set, so.
Okay. Councilman Legban?
Yes, did legal say that they'd agree with this? I didn't hear.
I don't have a problem. That's fine. Make it generic, yeah, because it'll change from time to time.
And I'll have to get the change right away tomorrow morning to the county because the county's considering it tomorrow morning. So they'll have to amend theirs too.
Any other comments from council? There's a motion on the floor and a second to amend. Cast your votes.
Motion carries seven one, mayor.
I would now take a motion for the amended lease agreement with ALO Communications at Fremont Technology Park. Councilman Yerger.
I'd make a motion to approve the amended lease agreement with ALO Communications at the Technology Park.
Councilman Sukram?
I'll second that.
Please cast your votes.
Motion carries eight zero, mayor.
Moving on to item sixteen, executive session for attorney-client privilege to discuss pending litigation. I would take a motion by council to move to go into executive session. Councilman Gibson?
I move to go into executive session for the purpose of strategy sessions with respect to threatened or potential litigation. And for the further reason that the executive session is necessary for the protection of the public interest.
Councilman Sukram?
I'll second that.
A motion has been made and seconded to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing pending litigation and for further reason that the executive session is necessary for the protection of the public interest. Is there any discussion? Councilman Sukram? Seeing no discussion, the pending motion is to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing pending litigation for the further reason that your the executive session is necessary for the protection of the public interest. Please cast your votes. Go into executive session.
Motion carries eight zero, mayor.
A motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing pending litigation for the further reason that the executive session is necessary for the protection of the public interest has been approved. Discussion will be limited to discussing pending litigation. No further actions or votes will be taken during the executive session. We'll now move to the conference room.